Welcome. We'll start our meeting, we'll call it this Board of Weber County Commissioners to Order dated this 24th day of October 2017 at 10 o'clock in the morning. In attendance today are Commissioner Gibson and myself, Commissioner Ebert. Commissioner Harvey is excused. We'll start today with a moment of silence, we'll move through our Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Mr. Duncan Olton and I will give us a thought of the day if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Olson.
Please your eyes.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Duncan. Really quick thought for today, again, it's always a good reminder for us as commissioners to be forward-thinking. So two quick thoughts, one, change your thoughts and you change your world. And the second is infuse your life with action, don't wait for it to happen, make it happen, make your future. I love those two quotes because the first is talking about how you change your mind, change your paradigm. And then the second is that you then take that change and actually do something with it, actually turn it into action. And I hope and I continue to work towards that being something that is a priority for us within the county to help strengthen our community and continue to move it forward. We'll start today under presentation, under E, we'll have an introduction of Ms. Weber County, Shannon Stoddard by Jan Wilson. Jan, come on up.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Shannon Stoddard and I have to tell you, she is our 30th Ms. Weber County. And she competed at Ms. Utah this past June and represented Weber County very well. I just wanted her to come to let you get a feel for who she is and let her tell you a little bit about her platform and her experience at Ms. Utah and also when our next Ms. Weber County will be. Shannon.
Ms. Stoddard, that sounds like a good Hooper name.
I'm actually from Ogdon.
With Hooper roots, right?
Oh.
Probably.
Say yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, because he'll ask you, do you have pioneers?
We're going to genealogy here.
Well, like she said, I am Shannon Stoddard. My platform is actually very near and dear to me. It is Helping Hands Elevating Suicide Prevention and Awareness. I've gone to different schools and spoke with them about it with the younger kids, it's more of anti-bullying and then you can go more into how you can lower the number of suicides throughout the older schools. So I've done a lot with that and that has actually been really enjoyable to see and actually have personal people come up to me and tell me how I can help them and how I can give advice to others and lower the number of suicides and we can all band together and do that as Weber County. And so that's one of my favorite things about being Ms. Weber County this year. Another thing that I have enjoyed is actually going to Ms. Utah, meeting other girls and representing Weber County well has been very important to me because it is such a neat part of Utah. So I think that has been a great experience for me and hopefully I have represented Weber County as well as I can, so that has been a really neat experience.
Ms. Gibson.
Well Shannon, tell me on your platform, tell me how you developed an interest in that topic, I'm just curious.
At a young age, I actually started to feel, I started to have suicidal thoughts when I was about eight years old. And that's something I've actually had to struggle through my whole life, but then I learned throughout the high school years how I can actually help overcome that myself is by helping through service and helping other people as well. So by getting involved and throughout the Miss America Organization that has helped me out a ton and helped me know that that is never an option and how I can help others lower the number of suicides.
Super, super impressive. I am grateful for people, someone who might make that a priority. Because it's just a tremendous challenge in our society and, you know, it's interesting, having children of my own, I'm starting to figure out that there's a lot of things that I can't tell them that they have to learn on their own. And some of those struggles in life are exactly the things that end up making them strong. And so it's neat to see an opportunity, like some of the opportunities you've had that have made you who you are today. And I think because of that, you can be a powerful ambassador and it is fun to be a part of that, it's fun to watch.
Thank you.
How you have conducted yourself and been such a good ambassador for youth throughout our community. So I'm super grateful that you chose this particular platform. I think that there's more of us that have struggled with situations like that than we'll ever really know publicly. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you Shannon, come on up really quickly Jan, I just want to say thank you Shannon for, it takes a tremendous amount of courage to tell your story, to personalize your story. But what that does, that helps to strengthen others. The biggest challenge to addressing the issue with youth in this area is providing examples to them that they can overcome it. Illuminating the shame or the embarrassment and having someone of your stature talk openly about the challenges that you face and then you continue to face. Empowers and emboldens others to face their challenges and come out and talk and communicate and receive the help that is needed. So it's an amazing story and we cannot tell you from a commission perspective how much we admire you for your courage and your willingness to talk about that, so thank you very much.
Just to let you know, Ms. Weber County this year is going to be in November, so November 11th over at the Perry Egyptian Theater. Shannon will be there and will be highlighted that night.
Do you mind if we come down and get a picture with you?
Oh, of course you can. Okay, looks good, thanks. Okay, I can't see very well, so hopefully this turns up. Okay. Well, you probably have like 10.
Our second presentation will be from our Utah Restaurant Association, Melva Sign. And Melva, would you introduce anyone else that you have with you today? We're excited to hear from you.
Melva, before you start, I apologize, I know how to spell your name, but apparently somebody else didn't, so I apologize for that.
Oh, does it say Melba?
When else is sign, like in?
Oh, like S-I-G-N?
Yeah.
That's okay, that's a good sign.
We're talking about signs later today, so it's a theme today.
Perfect, perfect, way to lead into it. Well Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I have with me Jamie and Katie and we're going to present to you our Taste Utah program that we've been doing in the state of Utah now for about, we're going into our third season. And we want to make sure that Weber County restaurants in the community up here get represented and that we do a good job of telling your story as far as your food community is oriented. Right now, in Weber County, you have approximately 30,000 people employed in the restaurant industry. That doesn't count ancillary services like those vendors and those people who service the restaurant industry. But you have a strong labor force here and the restaurant industry continues to prove to be resilient. And about 2007, we started a program for restaurant advertising because when you look at most restaurants, the profit margin of a restaurant, especially a family-owned and operated restaurant is about 2% to 4%, which makes it really difficult to fit in advertising in some of all of the things that they need to do. So we as the Utah Restaurant Association have taken it upon ourselves to create a marketing campaign to assist our restaurant community throughout the state of Utah. And so I have Jamie and Katie, Jamie's going to kind of help with the computer and Katie's going to come up and kind of tell you what Taste Utah is. You can access Taste Utah whether you're a tourist or whether you're a resident, you can hear the story for the restaurants in Weber County, you can find it on the internet, it's now worldwide. We're there through many TV and publishing outlets as far as we're on Aura TV for Taste Utah and other publications that we produce and other television shows. And so this is reaching a television audience in the state, in the surrounding states, and then through the international web, it's also made available. So it's a good resource and as I say, that's what we do, we promote the restaurant industry, we tell the story of the restaurant. Not just how you get your food in the restaurant, but from the farm, how it's grown, how it's prepared, the nature of what that takes, the involvement. Because we need all of these people, they're all a part of our restaurant community. So we need to have all of these people involved and our Taste Utah program tells that story of that complete farm-to-table. So I'm going to turn some time over to Katie and she's going to just kind of show you the program so that you can see it. Thank you.
Last time I saw Katie, she had overalls on.
This is true. We came up to the farm. And Melva did a great job sort of educating you on the restaurant industry and sort of the breadth of it. Mel, I might just take one of those as well, thank you. And this is Jamie, as you may see from the images, we produce the television series, direct it, and also co-host their series as well to make sure that we are telling the complete food story. So Taste Utah's intention is to share Utah's food story. So the tagline of the television series is "Behind Every Good Food Story" is a great people story. And that's really what we believe at the Restaurant Association and through our Taste Utah marketing endeavors as well. And so we created this television series as an avenue to educate our consumers as to where they can eat, what they're eating, how important it is to support local businesses as well as your favorite franchises as well. And at the same time, engage them in the act of eating out, make them feel like they already know the owner, they already know the chef, they know the story, they know what to order when they go in to eat. We believe that food is necessity, but how you share it is what creates community. And every community throughout the state of Utah has a very different food story to tell. And we're committed to sharing those stories from the root system all the way up. So Main Street, Park City is a little bit different than Main Street, Salt Lake City, it's a little different than Historic 25th Street in Ogdon. But every, in the restaurant business, we call it terroir. Every restaurant has this amazing terroir. So we'll take you through the website, the website is 100% a valuable marketing tool as well as sort of an innovative, interactive dining guide. So everything on the site ends in visual and community engagement. So the cornerstones of the URA and our endeavors is to educate, to engage, and entertain. And if you're doing it all right in that symmetrical order, you're doing a good job. And so we, as you land on the website, Taste Utah, I think the internet is just a little slow here, that's why it's bobbing and weaving. I checked it this morning and it was nice and steady. And so you arrive on the site, you click Taste UT, just the, okay, so you can click the little box on the top. And yep, you're great, and it'll give you home, locations, about contact. But if you just click that box Taste Utah right in the center of the page, then it will bring you down to the entire state of Utah. So we'll just click it. And we've partnered with Summit County to feature Taste Park City on our homepage and almost like a little Taste Park City package in and of itself with Taste Utah. But when you hover over the Taste Park City, you see these 25 different options. We've broken up their categories into different regions and specifications, which has been a really fun project. What we're talking about today for you is package number three, which is Taste Ogdon, that would be featured as a part of our region. So when you hover over Northern, as Jamie has done, which is great, it just shows you all of the places that we've visited in Northern Utah. And right now, they're not county-specific, they're not state-specific, it's just the state of Utah broken up into three separate sections. And we'd love to get more concise with your enrollment because we want to work with the communities and the counties that have a vested interest in telling the story. And so, for example, we have featured Zoe, I'm sorry, Tona Sushi on Historic 25th Street. So you click on Tona Sushi.
Looking for my sample.
Yeah, I know, we should have brought him, why didn't we? Misso soup for all. Instantly, the vignette that we created for the television series begins to play. And it's Jamie and myself speaking to the restaurant, but also to the area. So you'll hear us mention Historic 25th Street, you'll hear us mention Union Station, you'll hear us mention Insight. Yeah.
I want to know who's sitting on the dashboard taking that video.
Yeah, it's a little elf, his name is Daniel.
No, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no problem.
What you said about us, you know?
Yeah, exactly, well, we rave. Let's see a little. There we go. So right there are the owners, the chef himself, Tona and Tina.
That's a pleasure to be sitting at table with you and talking sushi.
It's a pleasure, I'll wow.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Who else do we have sitting in front of us?
What here, what we have is Gorgonzola with saute with butter, Gorgonzola with saute.
Oh my gosh.
And then we have sushi right here, it's called a Jaffa, a coral shrimp.
I'm hungry already.
Okay, good, see, it's doing its job. Essentially allowing the owners to talk about their intention and let the audience get familiar with them, so suddenly they're starting to feel like community. And then going in the kitchen and talking about a signature dish, so then as a consumer goes in, they know what to order. And then we end with another consumer who's maybe a super fan, maybe not, but just has been there and really enjoys the experience, talking about their experience, what they love at Tona, why they love the proximity. I mean, in this particular segment, someone mentions the parking, parking on Historic Main 25th is simple and, you know, and it's some of the best sushi in the state and all of these different things. We are predisposed to think it's one of our most favorite places to go and eat and enjoy. And so essentially what we're creating is, so in this particular segment, Tony talks about how he sources from Zoe's Garden. Zoe's Garden is in Leighton, so in Davis County, but then we're able to go to teach our consumer about Zoe's Garden and why it's important. And they're already understanding that Tony feels it's important and valuable to support local. And then, oh, suddenly, so here's David Chen and this is why it's important and you get to meet David Chen and his child. And so you really are elevating the mindfulness of every single consumer in the state of Utah and there's that pride. But then as a tourist or somebody that would use this site looking for where the locals eat and what are the local gems. You may have somebody who may be predisposed to fly in and think, oh, you know, I'm just going to go to Tsunam, or just going to go to Takashi, it's just down there. But then they watch something like this and they think, oh wait, there's this just up in Ogdon, it's easy to park, there's this historic train station, there's all these other things. Why not just drive up there, spend 45 minutes and enjoy ourselves up there? So that's the intention of the segments is to really educate, engage, and then entertain. And the entertain bit is get the people out entertaining themselves at a restaurant. And so when you go to locations and you see Northern, Southern, Wasatch Front, when you click on Northern, then you have all of the places that we've been categorized in little boxes with beautiful photography from these places. So we'll click on Beehive Cheese, which is an amazing producer that is at the base of Ogden Canyon and has an incredible story in its own right. So then when you click on this video, again, Jamie and I sort of describing the area, the location. Anytime we, anytime we can wear them, we try to, you know. And that makes you want to eat it, right? Yeah, so we'll, and one of the really exciting things about the website itself is that it encourages community engagement. So if you scroll down on this, just on the page Beehive Cheese, it lets folks know where it's located. But then it also creates a hashtag for Taste Utah, where if you hashtag Taste Utah on Instagram, then your food photo is instantly propagated into the website. And so you're getting a lot of different ideas as a consumer where to eat. So yep, this looks amazing, Beehive Cheese is great, but oh my gosh, those tacos look awesome, where are those? And so continually aiding in staying hungry, searching for food and going out and eating. Our, you know, our overall goal of the campaign is to obviously educate local citizens, but also to brand the state of Utah as a dining destination. And each hub that's contributing to that as a part of the community in its own right for what it does. So in Ogdon, we've also featured Rooster's Brewing Company, which is also a wonderful staple of Historic 25th. And Kim, who is the owner, is just a champion of your county and of your city of Ogdon, which is amazing. And they were one of the first restaurants to really support Beehive Cheese. So that's an amazing food story just within itself. We've also featured The Prairie Schooner, which is one of these amazing restaurants that has a theme that people will drive up to, sit in a covered wagon or a schooner and enjoy some time there. And so again, and?
Why do you get to drive all the time? Notice the thing here.
Just to Ogdon. Jamie drives in other places. But don't notice that I'm not wearing my seatbelt, Jamie usually always is. No, we always are wearing our seatbelt, we just hide them for audio for production. And so we show the interiors, we educate the consumer on what kind of experience they can expect. You know, there are yelps, there are open tables. you've had a bad experience or you're a superfan, you're giving someone your opinion, and they're unregulated most of the time. Something like this creates the synergy between the restaurant and the consumer to say, just see it for yourself. This is what the restaurant is, this is where you're going. And it doesn't need to have stars, and it doesn't need to have, I mean, there are price points and things like that on the website, but it doesn't need to be rated because you get to rate it. You're watching a four to five-minute-produced vignette, which, these vignettes are all television quality, they've all appeared on the television series Taste Utah. The series itself, the series itself is 13 episodes. We break it down, three locations per episode, it's typically a vendor and then two restaurants. And we would feature 10 Ogden, Weber County-specific new locations on this next season of Taste Utah, as well as create, under the Northern banner here, another category that's Taste Ogden. So it wouldn't be as you, well, Taste Weber County, I mean, I would almost say, creating maybe a few, whatever your specific brand is that you're wanting to brand. So if it's Weber County, absolutely Weber County, we can work together on that one, for sure. And then Historic 25th, back to Rooster's, and just showing even behind us the, you know, quality, caliber of the street and the neighborhood. And for us, it is important to tell the neighborhood story as well. Jamie, any thoughts?
I like it. You guys had me at cheese.
Way back. Yeah, so really, we would just be thrilled to work with Weber County. We want to continue to put Ogden City on the map and surrounding areas. We have a particular pride for this area, so we would just love you telling the story.
Well, there's, it's, I'll just comment quickly that I think it is neat. We are really proud of our community. And one of the best parts about this job is being able to be a cheerleader for that community. And there is an awful lot of character around our restaurant scene. I mean, it's not your average, everyday thing. This is something that we're very proud of, and our local agriculture and production all the way through. To me, it's pretty neat to see Weber County dairy, Weber County cheese processing, all the way to a retail outlet of Rooster's selling that product. And you could go with a lot of different examples of that, but that shows the diversity, I think, of our community, and it's just really special. We appreciate you taking interest in us and in our community. Thanks for coming, and thanks for being a part of this important assignment. Appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner, before we move into our consent items?
I don't have any. Okay, we'll move on to...
Other than I did see the overalls come back out in LeBeau's. At LeBeau's, did you see that?
Yeah, they do make some appearances.
All right, good deal.
Thank you. We'll move into F, Consent Items. Item number one, Request for Approval of Warrants 1228 through 1240 and 421986 through 422206 in the amount of $2,116,329.36. Item two, Request for Approval of Purchase Orders in the Amount of $76,148.63. Item number three, Request for Approval of Minutes for the Meeting Held on October 17, 2017. And item number four, Request for Approval of a Severance Agreement Buy-in Between Weber County and Kevin MacLeod. Commissioners, any questions about those items on the consent calendar?
I don't have any.
Lynn, would you like to go over warrants and POs?
Love to, thank you, Commissioner. The 15 POs for a total of $76,000. The top items there, 36% or $28,000 went to IT for firewall and security software.
Yay.
Mm-hmm.
Important.
Yes, it is. 23% or $17,000 went to the jail for water softener repairs, cameras and locks. 13% or $10,000 went to the transfer station as roadbase for emergency repairs. There were 234 checks for a total of $2.1 million. The top items there, 29% or $623,000 was for the library construction costs. 22% $468,000, also for the transfer station, loaders and excavators. 8% or $169,000 went to Weber Human Services for a monthly contribution. 7% $148,000, again to the jail, shower resurfacing, counseling and food. 5% or $115,000 to public defenders. And finally, 5% $109,000 to the library, primarily for books and materials.
Thank you, Lynn. Commissioner Gibson, any questions specific to the POs or the warrants?
I don't have any questions.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as read.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, Lynn. On to G, Action Items. Number one, Request for Approval of the First Amendment to the Weber County, excuse me, Weber Center Parking Structure Structural Evaluation and Feasibility Report for Professional Service Agreement. Mr. Shawn Wilkinson. Shawn?
Good morning, thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, you have before you a contract for an updated study of the parking structure. This would be a cost of $10,000, and the purpose of the study is to give cost estimates and prioritize repairs that could keep the structure open for the next two to five years. So, that is the basis of this. We are using Reeveley Engineers. They did the original study back in 2015. This is within the scope of that original contract, and we have met all of the requirements of procurement and has been reviewed by our legal counsel.
Shawn, any questions, Commissioner?
Just a comment that I appreciate your looking at this. Shawn, it's a tough one because these, there are so many capital improvements that are on the horizon with all of our facilities, and this is one that we just have to be very careful to keep the safety aspect in mind, but by the same token, it's a huge chunk for us to bite off if we do it all at once. And so, I think it's good to know what all of our options are, I think, before we go into it. So, it makes sense to me that we're at this point, and that for a few thousand dollars, we can understand a little bit more about what options might be available to us. So, appreciate you bringing this to us.
I also appreciate, I'd just like to add that through the process of our reviewing all of our capital projects, I think we are setting aside dollars for those future capital projects so we can have our bonding as small as possibly can. And so, if we can hold off on building the structure for several years, we can build up that capital line item to, so at the end of the day, we're actually borrowing less, which I think is fiscally responsible. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, Shawn. And that being said, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract, the First Amendment to the Contract Between Weber County and Reeveley Engineers.
I will second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you. Item number two, Request for, excuse me, Request from the Department of Community and Economic Development for Approval to Sell Surplus Real Property, Parcel Number 09-038-0015. Shawn?
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a small piece of property that we obtained in the 1993 tax sale. We have been approached by an adjacent property owner who wants to purchase the property. It was declared surplus two weeks ago in the county commission meeting. We will be selling this for $1,065, which is the amount that it is valued at by the assessor's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibson?
I've looked at this, and I think it meets the intent of what we try to do. We really don't want to own property unless there's some public need and necessity for that. And so, with that, I think this parcel makes sense, is one that we would try to dispose of the best that we could. And obviously, I think it's within our policy for Mr. Hatch's office during the tax sale to offer it in the first place to an adjoining property owner, and especially if we can get it sold for what it's valued at, and that's always a positive thing. So, I'll make a motion then that we approve the surplus of real property on the parcel number 090380015.
I will second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you, Shawn. Item number three, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-In Between Weber County and Five Shoots Productions for the RMPRA Winter Series Rodeo to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center. Duncan Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Duncan.
Good morning. I have to apologize, I didn't bring a video of me making cheese.
Well, you're not going to get our full attention, that's probably...
That's what I'm worried about. This contract is with the winter series, the RMPRA rodeo. It's one of our best customers, and so, really, it comes down to us being a sponsor in discount for some of the setup and the teardown and the facility rates.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Duncan. Commissioner?
This is one that we see about every year, right?
Yep.
It's a good piece of business for us. Appreciate the work that you've done in continuing to bring these to us and keep this coming. So, I'll make a motion, Commissioner, that we approve the contract between Weber County and Five Shoots Productions.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, Duncan.
Thank you.
We'll move to item H, Public Hearing. Request for a Motion to Adjourn Public Meeting and Convene a Public Hearing.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you. Public hearing is to discuss and take comment on a proposal to amend the following sections of the Weber County Code, definitions under 101-1-7, and Ogden Valley Signs Title 110, Chapter 2, to amend provisions related to flags, window signs, and portable signs. Mr. Charlie Uwer. Charlie?
Hello, sirs. Good morning. So, this is a request from the Ogden Valley Business Association. We don't often get signed amendment or ordinance amendment, excuse me, requests from applicants, so we're happy to fast-track those kind of ordinance amendments when they come in. We actually started on this some time ago with the business association. There's been a couple of different iterations, and ultimately, I think we landed on something that the business association is very comfortable with. The business association has done a really good job reaching out to the public and trying to find the comfort level for the public as well. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I wanted to take just a little bit of a different format than we normally do, because this is an applicant who has submitted the request. I'll highlight the overarching points, and then invite Ashley Cross from the business association up to the podium, if that's okay?
That is fine.
Okay. So there are three primary changes that the association has asked for. One is for the restrictions that are currently in our sign code on the display of flags to be lifted, or at least loosened. The other is for the restriction of window signs, the requirement for them to be non-illuminated, to be loosened just a little bit, and the requirement that prohibits portable signs to also be loosened up just a little bit. And so, what we've done on that, and as I'm explaining this, there's a key court case that the Commission should be aware of, coming out of Arizona from a couple of years ago, that essentially says, if you have to read the sign to determine what category of sign it fits in according to your ordinance, then you might be infringing on some free speech. And so, when we're talking about an open or a closed sign, an illuminated open or closed sign, we're going to be hard-pressed to say that sign has to say "open" only, or "closed" only, it can't say something else. And so, we could talk about time, place, manner, display standards, colors, illumination, and those kinds of things, but when it comes to the actual...
Message.
Message, we're restrained. And so, what we've done, as far as flags go, we wanted to make sure it was pretty clear that flags are not considered signs. But a flag can quickly become a sign if it doesn't have specific standards. And so, what I did is I pulled up the United States Sign, or excuse me, Flag Code, and I just tried to do my best to mimic what the display standards are for the United States flag, and said, if you've got flags, and you can display them like the United States flag would be displayed, go ahead and display them. And that's what you see with the requirements under the flag section. And we're also putting some graphics in the ordinance to help the public understand what it is that we're meaning when we describe it. As far as window signage goes, we've loosened the window sign section up to say that one window sign, no more than four square feet, can be illuminated. The rest of the window signs will need to be non-illuminated. And then, we provided some clarifications in the window sign section. And then, as far as portable signs go, and this is really the meat and potatoes of the request, the Ogden Valley Business Association asked that the county allow for A-frame signs. And they were not just comfortable, but very supportive of the county's desire to make sure that if we have A-frame signs all over the place, it's going to look a little cluttered, it's going to look messy. And so, if we're going to do A-frame signs, they got to look somewhat similar, they've got to be displayed in a similar fashion, and there's got to be some limitations on how many are out there. And so, after working back and forth with the OVBA and Ashley Cross and other members of the OVBA, I think we came to a really good middle ground where everybody was pretty satisfied. Essentially, a little graphic in there, they don't have to be these exact window signs, but we're saying nine square feet, no taller than three feet, no wider than three feet, you can go smaller if you want to. They've got to be dark background with light lettering, so we have a consistent theme in the way these look. You can have up to two off-site portable signs, and then one onsite portable sign per business. And each portable sign, if you're placing it off-site, can't be any closer to another portable sign than 10 feet. So, that's the meat and potatoes of the request, which I think gives the business association, the businesses up there, a lot more latitude to market their product to the traveling public, especially for those businesses that aren't right on the main thoroughfares. Any questions?
I don't have a question at this point.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm going to invite Ashley up to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I get to skip most of my first page, thanks to Charlie. My name is Ashley Cross, 3795 East, 1900 North in Eden. I'm the Chair of the Ogden Valley Business Association. I'm also a member of the Ogden Valley Community Relations Committee, and I sit on the Visit Ogden Board of Trustees as an ex officio member. My job as the Chair of the Business Association is to accurately represent the many voices of the members. We have about 100 members, as well as several affiliate members, and then we also have several nonprofit friends who are not charged for their membership, their advertising, or charity event promotion. The Board of the OVBA is comprised of all volunteers, which means that none of us are paid to represent the business community in Ogden Valley. Over the past several months, Charlie has taken on the task of educating the Board members to the reality of some of the early draft submittals in regard to the size and the type of signs we were originally requesting, and the Board has taken his education to heart. So while the OVBA may be credited with the current simplified version of our submittal, it was really Charlie and the Planning Commission that helped us to see the truth behind some of the complex verbiage and formula references that have since been removed. We have made numerous concessions and compromises, and what we are left with are three small, tiny, to use the word of one Planning Commissioner, requests that will hopefully enable our growing business community to remain vibrant. The types of businesses that are affected by the current limitations in regard to directional and event signage would be A, those businesses whose main entrance is not on the street side of their individual business locations, and therefore are requesting permission to place A-frame signage in a location that is not necessarily tied to the business entrance. Examples of such businesses include, but are not limited to, the following: Mountain West Physical Therapy, Ogden Valley Medical Aesthetics and Family Practice, Chanyo Acupuncture and Massage, Citywide Homes, New World Distillery, and several businesses located inside the Diamond Peak Plaza. B, businesses who are part of a complex or plaza, and which are somewhat visible from the main artery... New World Distillery and several businesses located inside the Diamond Peak Plaza. B, businesses who are part of a complex or plaza and which are somewhat visible from the main artery but are set back far enough from the main road that they may not be visible from the main artery where speed limits range from forty to fifty miles per hour. Such businesses include but are not limited to those businesses located in the Eden Center as well as the Diamond Peak Plaza. On September five, a number of Ogden Valley business members representing the above scenarios spoke to the Planning Commission and presented data that proved marked increase in patrons when visible signage was displayed near their main arteries. Longtime business owner and landlord over a number of tenants located in Diamond Peak Plaza, Lori Mortensen, is an OVBA Board Member and owner of one of the valley's most trusted and respected businesses and one that employs numerous valley residents year round. Her tenants are directly affected by the need to better alert passersby to their location. In a letter to the editor in the Ogden Valley News, businesses were accused of not using online media to the full capacity in an effort to advertise their locations. After the publication of that letter, we pooled our members to see what sort of online signage members were using. Feedback included Google Maps, Apple Maps, Bing, Facebook, TripAdvisor and Yelp with attached maps and directions. OVBA members are also afforded access to numerous social media sites such as the Visit Ogden Valley Facebook page, Ogden Valley Business Association Facebook page and an events calendar that links with Visit Ogden's event calendar to name a few. Clearly this accusation that businesses are not taking advantage of online directional aids is false. The bottom line is that when folks drive up to the valley, they're not staring at their phones. They are staring out the windows, looking for a place to stop, shop, eat, recreate or patronize. Also depending on one's location in the valley and depending on one's particular carrier, it may not even be possible to get a clear cell signal. So despite the business community's investment in various forms of advertising, it is the consumer that most often complains about the difficulty in finding a business. Tourists use Yelp, TripAdvisor and Google. Locals, meaning anyone from Utah but outside of the Ogden Valley, do not drive around the valley staring at their phones and searching for things to do. That's how tourists travel. When signs are placed at key directional spots in the valley, our businesses experience a notable uptake in traffic. We talk to our customers. We ask them how they found us. And the Ogden Valley business community depends on locals, not just tourists, to survive year round. Our ability as the valley's only business association to aid the county in enforcement is not going to involve policing violators but in educating our members about the new ordinances that allow for certain signs given the conditions that the Planning Commission has put in place. The conditions will ultimately reduce the number of unauthorized signs, standardize the look of signage and hopefully remove the trashy banners that have been erected during what many of us refer to as a free-for-all phase of placing random signage. We have agreed to the standardized rustic look in regard to color, material and size of signs. We have participated in numerous conversations with the Planning Commission to determine what those standardized expectations might mean. We have agreed to the hours and the locations in which a particular sign may be displayed or lighted in a window. We have agreed to a required permit in order to display an A-frame sign. In short, we have agreed to every single requirement that the Planning Commission has asked us to accept. We have watched businesses fold due to lack of traffic when signs have been removed by the county. Simply ask Luis Rodriguez for his experience in that regard. Lack of inability to point visitors to his location directly led to the closure of Luis's Mexican restaurant. David Lorenz, owner of Alpine Pizza fears the same for his business if he is not allowed to direct folks to his location. If there are no businesses located in the valley, there will be no villages. Your approval of three tiny proposals today is critical to the economic viability of many businesses in our valley. And I would urge you to follow suit with the unanimous approval of the County Planning Commission and support Ogden Valley businesses by voting in favor of our proposal. Thank you.
Very well said. Questions Commissioner? Thank you very much. Stay close. Now is time set aside for those in the public that may have thoughts or concerns or would like to make a statement, please come forward. Please state your name and where you're from. You don't have to give your address per se.
Okay, perfect. So I'm Tyson Land, just living Roy. And I received, we bought a house a little over a year ago, notice of property value for our taxes. And anyways, we paid X amount of dollars and we got a notification saying that we need to pay tax on this amount for the house. And it said if you don't agree with this, just send in all the right paperwork. We filled out everything we needed, checked the box. It said, you know, if you hadn't lived here or if you bought this house within the last two years, just provide us with, you know, your sales documents and everything. We sent it in and they sent us back still saying that we owe this amount. Well, we didn't pay that amount for that house. And so we're getting taxed on an amount that's a lot more than what we paid for this. It just doesn't seem, I'm just not understanding why we'd have to pay tax on a house. So we, like I said, we paid, it wasn't a short sale. It was a good deal on a house, but it wasn't a foreclosure. This amount we paid, why are we having to pay additional taxes? It's just like if you bought a, go to the grocery store, they don't tax you on a hundred dollars more than what you paid. Why are we getting taxed on stuff that we didn't, something we didn't pay for? So we just, like I said, we've sent in everything and we're still getting that we're having to meet and then we're going to have to have a hearing about this. So.
So the best person to answer that question is actually our county assessor and he can explain that entire process. That is not something that I think the counties have the purview to change whenever they want. It's a state requirement on how property is assessed. And he is the one who can walk you through that whole process and refer you to a specific code. Have you had a chance to talk to Mr. John Uliberry?
I haven't. No.
And from time to time, I think it's, I think he will admit if there's a mistake made, so. When there's a mistake made, he's good about figuring that out and making changes if he can within the statute. So I would suggest, or second that suggestion that you should talk with Mr. Uliberry. County Assessor is independently elected and so he has authority over these types of things. The commission doesn't. He's on the second floor and he's probably there right. He's on the third floor and he's probably there right now.
So what was his last name?
Uliberry.
Uliberry.
Uliberry. Just go to the assessor's office and take a minute to tell them what your problem is and ask if you can talk to John. And I guarantee if he was here, he'd catch you at the door.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Okay, I can do that. And I mean, does my valid, do I seem like a valid concern that you pay this amount for a house and that's what your taxes should be? Is that?
Well, again, I don't want to give you information that's incorrect and I don't want to tell you what I think the process is.
Okay.
If I'm not a hundred percent sure. He will be a hundred percent sure. And he is a very thoughtful individual. So he'll talk to you and better explain it to you than I could ever think about doing.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Cortland wants to say something. Oh Cortland, go ahead.
I would also encourage you to make sure you follow any instructions that you were given. If you have a desire to appeal or anything, don't ignore those thinking that just talking to somebody here is going to resolve it. If you have certain appeal rights that were stated there, make sure you pay attention to what those say.
Because again, that's all statutory, so once those appeal dates pass or timelines pass, many times that step is no longer available. So thank you Cortland. Anyone else from the public, please feel free to come on up.
Good morning Jan.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Jan Fulmer, thirty-seven forty-one Red Hawk Circle in Eden.
She just says her address because it's cool to say Red Hawk.
Right. There are a lot of them around too. But having worked on the Ogden Valley General Plan recently, which took several years to complete, the one theme throughout that plan is to ensure the rustic nature of the valley is maintained. And I also very much want to support local businesses. We do want to see them succeed. So based on the amendment to the sign ordinance, which I do confess I have not read all the details of it, I would just like to ask three questions. In terms of the electronic lighted signs that would be in the windows, is there some restriction on the max number of lumens? You know, how bright can it be? Because quite frankly, in traveling through New Mexico, we saw a restaurant that had a skylight and they had a sky spotlight coming up through the spotlight, which, well, it was inside the establishment and it was coming through the window, all right? The second thing is architectural standards for the A-frame signs, the sandwich signs as they call them. Can we have some type of architectural standard that's rustic? And I think the third most important thing is can we have some increased resources to enforce whatever the standards are? I know there is one lady who has been the enforcer in the valley and my heart's out to her because it's like almost an impossible job because she can give somebody a fine for a sign and then the next day it's right back out again, all right? So is there something that can be done to ensure we have more resources or whatever to enforce whatever sign ordinances are finally put in place? That would be extremely helpful, okay? And that's all and Charlie might be able to answer the question on the lumens. Okay, thank you.
The lonely walk.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Ron Gleason, Unincorporated Huntsville. I support the changes that the OVBA is proposing. I look at them as an extension of the existing lighting ordinance that went into effect on the first of August, which you passed in July. I'd also like to just point out and applaud the process that the OVBA went through. Ashley mentioned the duration of time, but again, they did a great job asking for public input and really radically changing what they're asking for and what the requests were. And I think we all get educated through that and it was just a great process. The one thing I'd like to mention is when you passed the lighting ordinance back in July, there was a ten-year grandfathering clause that was put in for businesses. One of the unintended consequences of this was any business that was already out of compliance was given another ten years before they had to come into compliance. So what I'm asking you to do, one is to support and vote for these changes, but also do not, I don't see the need for a grandfathering clause with these particular changes. These are changes that can be made quickly, I think in many cases in a number of hours. And I don't believe that they will significantly hurt the businesses that may be out of compliance with these new changes being requested by the OVBA. The two other things I would like to mention and request is, part of the general plan, there is an initiative for wayward signing, signage. And I know the Planning Department is looking at that and I would encourage.
I don't know, do you mean wayfinding?
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding.
Wayward or wayfinding signage. I think that will go a long way in helping the businesses.
Sarah's only said wayfinding, so she has not told me there's wayward also.
Okay, wayfinding. I'm from the East Coast, so maybe we have different lingo here.
She's kept some secrets from me.
The wayfinding, I think this will also help the businesses and I would ask for you to try to set a priority for that and get that implemented. And the second thing is to encourage you when you're speaking with the folks from the town of Huntsville. They try to synchronize their ordinances with any changes being made with the county. And I think it's important that they get synchronized as quickly as possible so that we can have consistency across the whole valley. There is a good chunk of commercial businesses that are within the incorporated boundaries of the town of Huntsville. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Gleason. Well, seeing who's coming up, I think we're out of time. No, we're not.
I have a little time. Kim Wheatley from Unincorporated Ogden Valley.
Good to see you Mr. Wheatley.
The, I want to reinforce what Ron has said about wayfinding. As I was coming in this morning, I drive, I drive east on Highway thirty-nine, hit the stop sign right there at Huntsville. During some times of the year, along with maybe a hundred other cars, there is no indication at all from our economic development point of view that people have a choice on their way home of going through Eden. There is no directional, for example, if I'm on an interstate, I can see at least a fork and spoon that says go that way for food. But there's the hundreds of people literally that are lined up at that stop sign that don't know they can go east and spend some money or go north and spend a little money, I think is a tragedy. So I reinforce what Ron has said. I stayed in the JEM committee, I stayed completely out of this and watched a bunch of other people get involved and they had nothing but good things to say about the process. What started out as kind of a crazy idea ended up with something I think that's better for everybody. But one thing I can tell you is that this economic development part is not going to get there unless we kind of all pull together. So this wayfinding thing of getting people to at least drive by where they might spend some money is an important part of, I think, what we want to do. So thank you. Maybe you can work with UDOT to get us at least that sign.
Speaking of wayfinding.
You know, I can't let the opportunity pass. Sarah Tolliver with Visit Ogden, the destination marketing organization for Weaver County. You've heard from me on this topic and I just want to publicly reiterate the support of the Ogden Valley Business Association's proposal today. Obviously, we have faced a lot of challenges in implementing our long-term strategic plan for wayfinding and it is nice to hear the support from the community for what I feel like has been a long-term conversation of trying to communicate the importance of that signage. In the meantime, you know, in an effort to balance the maintenance of the integrity of the rural community we have in Ogden Valley as well as a community in which business owners can thrive, we know that a lot of the challenges that we have from a tourism perspective is bringing people to recreate in the valley and not having the proper signage or opportunities for them to then stay and spend their dollars there so that the valley residents can recognize the economic impact of that visitor. So as we, you know, work to allow for the appropriate development of the valley, obviously allowing for signage that will allow these businesses to thrive and make potential patrons aware that they exist, we are definitely in full support and encourage you to pass. Thank you.
I still see some faces that are here that haven't said anything. I don't want to discourage anyone. If you are here to talk specific about the public comment portion for the signed ordinance change, we invite you to come up. Okay, seeing none. Really quickly Charlie, there are some specific questions I would like to ask in regards to the lumens and our present ordinances. These signs meet the present ordinance. Is there an exemption for these signs as far as lumens? Are they falling within our present code?
Do you guys have it up on your screen?
No, but I'll take your word for it. I trust you.
So we, I did some research on these sign types and they're all different. So you've got LED signs, you've got the neon gas signs and all that. And so putting a specific lumen on it, it's not the same thing as you would putting a lumen on a light bulb because it's written right on the back of the package how many lumens it is. Not all of these signs are required to have the same. And so instead what we did was we said, may be illuminated in a manner visible from outside the building provided it shall only be illuminated during business hours and only to an illumination level reasonably necessary to communicate the message to the nearest street right of way. Reasonably necessary might put a little bit of subjective judgment in it, but when it comes to enforcement, if it's clearly a problem, we'll be out there to talk about what is reasonably necessary in relation to just the common open and closed sign or, you know, open for business.
There's no matrix that compares lumens to light dispersment on other types of LEDs?
There are. And I'm sure we can write a threshold limit. I didn't put a lot of focus into being that specific on this sign type.
I think we should create something. The reason is I do not want someone to spend several thousand dollars on a sign being unaware of the brightness limitations and leaving that up to someone who will just basically estimate what is appropriate. I want to give a standard that's easy for everyone to understand so when they're making that choice, they can make a choice with them. Governing levels. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I could put the effort into doing all the research and I'll come back with.
My preference again would be to have that in compliance with what our present lumens. Because as Commissioner Gibson said, we don't want to have the lumens arguing. Again, we've settled on something I think that we are comfortable with. Let's make sure that anything. Let's make sure that anything moving forward reflects that in a manner that allows the business community to put up signs they feel comfortable with that are compliant.
Great.
And I would just add to that, keep it simple. Try not, sometimes we get so carried away, all we do is grow government and make it harder for people to understand, but just keep it simple and easy the best you can, and, I mean, we're trying to solve the problem, not create more.
Right, right. Excellent.
On the architectural standards, I thought that you had touched base at the worst specific standards that you were using, that you had looked through the best practices, and they were rustic. So is that something you feel comfortable, as Mrs. Fulmer talked about, making sure that we have those standards?
It is. It's a paragraph. Do you mind if I read it?
If you say it's there, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
If you want to touch base with her, that's wonderful.
Will do.
And then here is my only comment on the enforcement. My personal preference is to decriminalize as much behavior as I can and have community work together to have standards that the community accepts. I love the idea of the OVBA and the rest of that community as a whole through the general plan to be working together. My request would be the OVBA help to enforce and regulate this as an entity with other businesses, that they have common goals and objectives. And I understand the concern with enforcement, because if there isn't a standard from this is our business community really working with the rest of the community and making sure that we do not have signs or other issues specific to businesses that the negative will reflect on the community and change the fill.
Assume that we can't, that we can't do better as far as enforcement, but, you know, there are, there are tons, I mean, just, our zoning ordinance is full of requirements, and, and we just, we just can't catch everything every time. And, I mean, Mr. Ebert's been in law enforcement, and if we were going to catch every single speeder, it would take, it would take a whole bunch, wouldn't it? I mean, we just, we have to be reasonable, and we will, I think it's fair to say that we need to do, if we pass an ordinance, we need to enforce it, right? But, but how that is done is complicated and difficult, and, and I, I'll look for recommendations from you as to how we do that. You know, I just don't want, don't want anybody to think that we're not making an effort, but by the same token, we're just not going to catch everything in any of our ordinances or any of our statutes. So we're gonna do the best we can.
Thank you. I appreciate both those perspectives. I had a good conversation with our enforcement officer. She's delighted that we're doing something with A-frame signs. She says that she spends so much time just taking them down, that if there was a permitting process to allow them to exist, and all she's gotta do is look and check a box, there's gonna be quite a bit less effort on her side to, for that enforcement, and she could spend more of her time on other things.
Two really quick things. I think we're really looking at wayfinding. We're working through a process. I think we've identified there's a need, for sure. It's how we fund it becomes the issue, and we're working our way through that. But Charlie, one of the things I think was brought up that I do agree with is, I understand the need on the lighting ordinance, because it affected virtually everyone in the entire upper valley, and we did create a grandfather because of that. We didn't want to be so intrusive into people's personal property, but we wanted from this point forward to, to really take forward-thinking steps to address that. However, I am not in favor of grandfathering for this specific. I think they're very easily, easy fixes, as was brought up, and I think that if we were to adopt this today, that this would be the standard that every business, so one business does not have a leg up on another business, so there's some equity in there also. And so my preference would be if you, if it's in here, grandfathering, I would ask that we not grandfather anything and we move forward.
It's not, is it?
It's not. In fact, every, all three things that you see in here are currently restrictions that people can't do. So if they exist, they're not existing lawfully. So we're not grandfathering any of that.
Okay, awesome.
I'll make a motion, Commissioner, that we adjourn the public hearing, reconvene the public meeting.
Second, any further discussions? Seeing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
We're back in our public meeting. Any action on our public hearing, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we amend sections 101-1-7, and as stated on the agenda, amending relating to flags, window signs, and portable signs.
I will second it. The only thing I want to make sure that we're still moving forward on is there's some type of matrix or some type of scale for signs that do not use lumens as the measurement of light.
We're not done talking about signs in the, in the larger threshold. There's, we've pulled out the bits and pieces that the OVBA wanted fast-tracked. There's a number of other changes coming, so I'll make sure I hit those with those changes, and I think you'll see that on your desk in a couple of months.
I have a motion in a second.
It's ordinance 31.
Ordinance 31. 31, is that what you said? I apologize.
31.
31. Any further discussion?
Chair, Chair Ebert?
Yes, sir.
Is the ordinance in the form, is he gonna make amendments then to what was presented to you already, or are you...
It's my understanding that this one will stand on its own. If there's other things brought forward, they'll come forward as a separate process.
Okay, and this will be a first reading, is that correct?
Sorry, we've never done first and second reading when it came to the land use ordinance, the land use code. We've just come straight to public hearing on that.
How do you want to handle it?
We'll do it wherever you want.
First, I'm not aware of an exception for this type of ordinance.
We'll count it as a first reading, and we'll put it on next week's agenda.
Perfect.
So all in favor for a first reading, say aye?
Aye.
Any polls that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, I just want to commend Ashley for your work on this. I know that it's a, it's a tough thing to work through a process like this, and will you please pass on to your members our appreciation for what they do. They are certainly not the enemy. They're the heart and soul that I think hold our communities together, and their willingness to go out there and, and put it all on the line and double down on, on their investment in our community is commendable, and I want them to know how much I appreciate them. So I hope you'll pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have time set aside for any other type of public comment.
Ron Gleason, unincorporated Huntsville, just 30 seconds under continuous improvement on the wall there. Starting today, when the agenda was posted for the meeting, all the supporting documents that describe the detail of each agenda item was also posted. I think it's great. It prevents, we don't have to make some phone calls now, understand, so I appreciate whoever was involved from the county getting that done, so we have all the information, because some of us do follow the details and try to understand it. So I'd like to say thanks to whoever in the county was able to get that done.
You've been doing that for a while, but it's good.
One of the things we tried to do is, other packets, they put the entire packet, so you have to go through like 300 pages. What we created were links specific to items, which is much easier for you to navigate.
Previously, they came out the, the week after the meeting. Now they're posted, so we can actually see them before we come here, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just easier navigation. It's great to see. I appreciate, I think, many other people, the communities. Thank you.
Glad it's helping. That's very well.
Any other? Mr. Wheatley.
Kim Wheatley again, unincorporated East Huntsville. This may be more than 30 seconds, but I, I'm mad this time. And what I'm mad about is that we have what I think is a kind of an enemy of our economic future in Ogden Valley, and that enemy appears to be Ogden City. So in the last 30 days or so, they, they have erected concertina-style chain-link fences around every wellhead on the end of Stringtown Road that are visible from anywhere in Pine View Reservoir. We have an 01 zone trying to protect probably our primary resource, other than our resorts. It's the primary resource we have of Ogden Valley, and it's the center of things. In the dead center of that, in the most visibly possible place, they've erected what looks like a concentration camp around every single blockhouse on the end of that point. I checked this morning, somehow our planning process is not involved in this. At the very, at the very minimum, this is a blatant insensitivity on the part of Ogden City for the values that we put in our general plan. I'm, I'm gonna be taking this to Mike Caldwell. There's only one person, I think, who's responsible for this, and it's Ogden City Council and the mayor, but I'm asking for your support in trying to protect what we, what we have in our general plan, because this is, this is the most offensive thing they've done. And what I thought they did across from the waterfall was, I thought they'd pegged scale on that with their carpet and whatever they strung up the side of the hill there, which is still there, with barbed wire and, and so on. So this utility that we have in Ogden City is not good for Ogden Valley, the way they're operating. And I would, I would ask you as a citizen, protect our investment up there, protect our economic value. Don't allow Ogden City to industrialize what we said was our rural character. I mean, it just, those things can be seen because there's shiny silver concertina wire in one-foot loops. There's probably several hundred yards of it. Thank you.
I'm really kind of surprised if that, if they would be exempt. That's interesting, but Rick, will you take a look at that for us?
I had conversation with the water manager from Ogden City on this, Kent Moffett. There is some federal requirements that they had, that they're restricted to. I told them of our fence regulations, that we would only allow decorative iron fencing in that area, and that's what we'd like to see per our ordinance, but they were exempt from that. I asked them if they would just do black powder-coated chain-link, even though that's against our ordinance, but they're exempt, and they said that they would look at that. One thing that they have done, I believe, they've told me verbally, I haven't actually seen that, is through Ogden Canyon, they put up some chain-link fencing around some of, some substations there that were not exempt, and they've taken that down and put up the iron in those locations. But the ones around the reservoir, I, they were exempt, and they provided us that information, and I was not happy about that, but...
Well, at a minimum, I think Mr. Wheatley says it well, it's an insensitivity at best. Let's work through this, and, Mr. Wheatley, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that certainly would be a, I haven't seen it, but it sounds like it definitely doesn't fit within what we're trying to create up there. So thanks for bringing it up.
Any other for public comment? Seeing none, I'll move to the next agenda item.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second, all in paper, say aye?
Aye.
It passes. Thank you very much for attending today.